We'll call a meeting, uh, administrative committee order to order. First, first items are the consent agenda. Approve the March first minutes and there are no budget change requests. Can I get a motion?
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Cherries. Next up, discussion decision items. Approve application for the McKnight Foundation's Vibrant and Equitable Communities Grant.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, as you know, I'm Lisa Morris-Selmstetler and I am here to, uh, present this information to you. Um, on behalf of Olmsted County Public Health, the Policy Analysis and Communications Team and Administration, we are working together, uh, on community engagement and what that could look like in the future. So, to start out with, I just want to, uh, talk a little bit about the SHIP grant that Olmsted County Public Health has received, um, for more than ten years now. And this piece that I'm assuming you know, but you might not, um, there is a mandate within that award that says we have to have a community council. And we have done that in the past, um, however, during COVID, we were allowed to kind of pause those activities because clearly, you know, we needed to focus on COVID. But now we're starting to come out of COVID, we think, maybe, uh, we'll see what, uh, Public Health tells us later today. And so we really wanted to start talking again about community engagement and what this might look like in terms of this community council and how that impacts SHIP. So, we started by looking back at some of our other community engagement efforts, um, that have been really successful. And so the one you've heard lots about it, um, is the Community Connector Model that we utilized for the census campaign. So, this was an amazing opportunity to reach out to community, partner with them, and then have them go to their neighbors and their communities, right? And really talk about the importance of the census. We reached a lot of folks that we may not have otherwise, and we had obviously an amazing turnout. So, we considered that a great success. Then we kind of tied that up and, you know, we said, oh, that was great. Moving on, we're done with census right now. Um, and then there was COVID, right? So then Public Health kind of picked that up and they're like, yeah, that was a great model, a great, a great way to share communication and get feedback, um, oftentimes with communities that we have a hard time reaching. So, we tried it again, right? We said, let's use the Community Connector Model for COVID, and it was, again, just wonderful results. It was really, really helpful to learn about what was actually happening in communities and where we still needed to do more work. Which leads us to today, right? So, we started talking months ago, definitely, probably closer to a year ago, about this wonderful model and what we could do with it long-term. And it turns out, we have this SHIP grant, you know, requirement that we, where we need to have a community council. So, what could that look like if we not only had this community council for SHIP using this type of a model long-term, but what else could it mean for community engagement countywide? So, that brings us to the ask for today, which is approval to apply for a McKnight grant, uh, McKnight Foundation grant, which is about, um, building vibrant communities through community engagement and participation, right? And so this is a one-year grant cycle, uh, we can be awarded up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it depends on what we ask for. And, um, the important part, there is no FTE request. Some of you have heard this already today, some of you weren't sure you believed it. Um, but there is no FTE, even provisional request at this time, uh, for getting this award. So, we're gonna just ask you again today if you can approve us applying for this grant so that we can kind of explore this community engagement space and figure out what we can do on a deeper level, both with the SHIP Community Council and, um, Olmsted County in general.
Okay, great. Questions?
Well, I already asked my questions, uh, earlier.
Okay.
Uh, so moved. That's that fast?
All right, we got a motion in second, we want to have any discussion, you anything?
Well, we were both at the HHH meeting where Lisa did that, and so we did ask our questions. And basically, my comments were that anytime that we can increase community engagement and bring people in to understand what's going on in the government and have a hand in developing that, it's good for us. So, I, that's why I second the motion.
And I'm sure you feel similarly?
I do.
Okay. All right, we got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you.
Good luck applying for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah. Go for the whole thing.
Two forty-nine.
If you don't ask, you won't get it.
That's right.
All right. Next on the agenda, administrator's report. Is there something here we want to talk about?
There is. First, we're just gonna bring a walk-on to you. And I put, um, copies up at, on your spots there for you, um, about this One Olmsted Talking Point. So, we've been working with the communications team for a while now. We're trying to put together for you some One Olmsted Talking Points so when you're asked in the community about what we're actually doing in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion, that you would have the information so you could respond appropriately. But you haven't seen these yet, so we were thinking we could just go through them today and you could give us any feedback that you have, um, so that we can go back and discuss again if we need to and, and make these, um, get these kind of finalized so that we get them out to each of you. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, let's just start right at the top with the first one. Um, One Olmsted is Olmsted County's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Initiative. Good then, okay. One Olmsted originated from a resolution passed by the Olmsted County Board of Commissioners in two thousand seventeen, formalizing Olmsted County's commitment to health, social, and racial equity. Okay.
Travis, if you see something that concerns you.
Well, I, if, if this is how we're gonna talk to the public about it, you might wanna say health equity, social equity, and racial equity.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, next, let's see, One Olmsted seeks to... Thank you. When Olmsted seeks to ensure an inclusive workforce environment to retain staff and support staff learning and development through awareness and education opportunities. That's the first bullet. Then we have ensure Olmsted County services to residents are equitable, that barriers are reduced, and are provided in an environment that promotes inclusiveness. Second bullet, and the third one is to ensure Olmsted County staff makeup will be representative of community demographics. We will work to increase the number of Olmsted County staff members who represent the community at large in diverse ways.
Can I see that one again? Olmsted County. Staff makeup.
Will be representative of community demographics.
Um, did you have to say makeup? That this, yeah, I mean, I'm just wordsmithing.
Yeah.
Just wondering if that Olmsted County staff will be representative.
Oh, yeah, that's a great, great point. We can take that out. Any other thoughts on those three bullets? They kind of encompass like the internal goals that we have, the community-facing goals, and then our hiring, our HR goal for One Olmsted.
Sometimes I just need a little bit of time to think about that. But, that second sentence in the third bullet there, we will work to increase the number. Basically, it's, it's, it's redundant statement when we already said that our workforce is going to reflect. But, it's, in, 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 what we're working to is, we're working to have that balance.
Right.
But, you know, I could pick any grammar apart, you know, if you gave me enough time, so. But I think it, you know, it, it says what it should say, but I mean, basically, what we're working at is we're working at a diverse, uh, workforce that represents the community. And how we're gonna do that is a number of ways.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I, I don't, I don't much like that second sentence either in that it it's cumbersome to say that represent the community at large in diverse ways, so.
Right. And that's not it, we're, we're just trying to have a, a staff and, and an employment, uh, situation that represents the community.
The diversity of our community.
The diversity of the community, sure, that's, that's what we're really doing, so.
Okay, no, that's helpful. We can go take a look at that one and make that a little more clear, especially when you think of it being a talking point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you have a question, Travis, or no?
No, well, I, if I could summarize, then maybe it would just be, we will work to ensure Olmsted County staff will be representative of, of community demographics.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's good.
Sounds good.
Okay, next is a One Olmsted Planning Team comprised of Olmsted County employees meets regularly and has developed a comprehensive project plan to help ensure these goals are achieved. Okay. Stop me at any time. Um, I'm gonna move on to results to date. The One Olmsted Planning Team purposefully began One Olmsted work internally with employees. To date, a number of diversity, equity, and inclusion-related activities have occurred within the Olmsted County organization.
You mean they purposely stayed internally?
Correct.
It's kind of a weird sentence.
It is a weird sentence.
Um, why not say the planning team began the work internally with employees?
Yeah, make it a little more.
Just take out purposefully. Because it sounds like the adverb is describing how you began it.
Right.
And not the program itself.
Well, and I, I question whether we even have to say that internally, because the whole per, this whole doc, this whole One Olmsted is internal. We're not working externally to change the demographics of Olmsted County. We're working internally to change the diversity of
Yeah.
of our, of our employees.
That's true. I think the reason that we were, we wanted to express that was to make sure it was clear to community as to why we had first looked at ourselves before we started maybe looking at things that community might expect us to be looking at in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion. For example, like our systems, right? And we wanted to start with educating employees and really thinking about, um, making sure we were on the path to start engaging community in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Does that make sense?
So, by systems, you mean activities, things that we do? Okay, I see, I understand that, then, yeah. And we can leave internally in there.
You wanna say intentionally.
Yeah, intentionally came to mind for me too. I, I do like that a little bit better.
At the end of the day, though.
Absolutely. That being said.
Regardless.
I have, sorry, Lisa, that's, that's an inside joke, talking about phrases that are totally useless.
Thank you for covering that, there are many. Okay, um, yeah.
What works on you?
You think with all of them into it?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Um, next, we've implemented five alliance groups for employees. Alliance groups are voluntary employee-led groups whose aim is to foster a diverse, inclusive workplace. Members include employees who share a characteristic in common. The alliance groups we have in place are mental health, BIPOC, which will spell out as Black Indigenous and, and people of color, LGBTQIA+, um, a diverse abilities group, and an allies group for employees who would like to be good allies to historically marginalized groups of people.
So, that would be, if, if you didn't identify with any of the first ones, you could join the allies?
Absolutely.
Works for me.
And would, do you have to identify with one of those groups to be in it?
Yeah, that was the original plan, was that folks would have a shared identity and, and that's how they would choose groups. In part, just to try and provide, um, spaces that felt really safe for folks to discuss some of the things that they experience.
Right. And then, thank you for adding the explanation of the acronyms.
Oh, yeah.
That's very good.
We thought you might enjoy that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next, we deployed our second annual diversity, equity, and inclusion survey, as well as focus groups to gather employees' thoughts and feelings on various aspects of diversity, equity, and inclusion. This feedback has helped the county identify areas of concern that can be prioritized by the One Olmsted team. We intend to conduct similar surveys on an annual basis to measure improvement on county, countywide DEI efforts. So, basically, how are we doing, right? Are we, are we moving in the right direction, or are there gaps? Um, you know, just getting all of that feedback so that we can measure.
And what would, how would you measure improvement?
Well, so some of the things we've already been pulling is data around, uh, for example, like, how many different types of opportunities are we offering to employees in a year? And then how many employees are even taking part, right? And are we seeing an increase? And we can even look into which topics employees seem most engaged with or most interested in. So, there's a number of ways we can kind of, uh, slice and dice some of that data, but we're trying to make sure we're collecting it. Okay.
Yeah. The first sentence there. Did you complete the survey? Is the survey completed?
We're in the middle of it right now. It's running for two, is that what you mean?
Well, yeah, uh, if it was completed, I would say we completed our second annual survey.
Yeah, we, we can say that.
Yeah, we are, you're right. But then the next one is, is that, I think what you mean there is, is that as well as the results from the focus groups.
Yes.
Because we didn't deploy the focus groups, we we're getting results from the focus groups.
That's good feedback, thank you.
I'm sure that Randy's just having fun over there listening to this, uh, how to write things understandably. Probably smiling to himself.
Yeah, very sleepy.
All these corrections.
All right, moving along. Okay, employees have had the opportunity to participate in a number of DEI-related educational opportunities. We've offered a number of circle of healing ses- sessions, which are designed to provide safe, confidential, and respectful opportunities for employees to come together, to listen, share, and obtain a deeper understanding from one another about challenging topics. Some of the circles of healing sessions have focused on microaggressions, privilege, implicit bias, historical trauma, and systemic racism. That is, those are just a few of the topics. There have been many.
So, what's the difference between that and the next paragraph?
We have also offered employees the opportunity to participate in culture-sharing presentations and DEI workshops. So, the culture-sharing presentations are presentations from employees about specific things in their own culture. And then those are put out, um, on our countywide, on OCU, Olmsted County University, so any employee can watch that. So, for example, um, I'm trying to think what we have out there right now. Clara, what is? Yes, there's one on Indian culture, for example, so people could go and watch that. And that's different than these, the circles that we've been offering that are kind of topic-based. It's a little more open to just one specific culture.
Well, maybe, well, that's, that's all fine, I just, I understand that probably the main difference then is is one's in person and...
Well, um, it starts in person, right? Because they present for their team usually, but then we also are, uh, recording that and offering it to anybody else in the county with their permission, of course, um, at Olmsted County University, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the DEI workshops are, um, this is an offering that we get from the YWCA that they put together in advance for us. They take only so many people, and even if it's virtual, they have, they're there live, right? So, um, and those have a variety of topics too that are separate and different and unique from the work that we're doing in circles, so. And maybe we should call that out, YWCA DEI workshops, that's a lot of letters, okay.
Thoughts? Good? They're good.
Okay. Uh, we launched a red flag reporting hotline for county employees to use to anonymously report discrimination they experience or witness in the workplace. This was implemented as another avenue for employees to pursue in order to report instances of discrimination and help our organization better evaluate these concerns countywide. And this, um, happens in partnership with Human Resources. I'm just adding that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Did we skip the one ahead of, above it?
Oh, did I? Let's see. Oh, yeah. To ensure One Olmsted is a focus throughout the Olmsted County organization, every department has identified annual diversity, equity, and inclusion goals with support and collaboration from One Olmsted. Senior leadership teams have also participated in DEI strategic planning sessions.
Looks good to me.
Any concerns about red flag reporting? Okay, in twenty twenty-one, we created a One Olmsted video. I think we actually shared it here first. Uh, the video was shared with all employees, but was specifically created for new employees joining the Olmsted County Organization to ensure they are aware of and understand our county's commitment to, we can add equity to these two, again, Commissioner Pedelke, but to race, health, and social equity.
If it's awkward to say equity in race, health, and social.
Yep, that makes sense.
Okay. That doesn't make sense either. No, that doesn't sound right.
Maybe we'll just pivot that one, yeah.
I think if you, health, people are thinking about fitness and stuff rather than equity. Health equity, which actually is a, a pretty, um, complex idea to understand. Health, I mean, it's okay. I'm just saying it, it is indeed a, a topic.
I'm just wondering if we shouldn't include the basic definitions per the resolution, right? In the talking points for each of those, for health equity, you know, racial equity and social equity. I mean, because you're right, that's, that's a point that people may not just understand or have, um, familiarity with, and that would give you those, uh, definitions, you know, exactly the way we wrote them up in the resolution.
Do you think? Do we need definitions, right?
So, these are talking points, um, for us to be able to talk about this, but not necessarily a publication.
This is true, yes. So, it's really what you want to take from it or what you think is most meaningful for you.
Okay.
I think we're probably fine.
Yeah, then we're fine.
Okay. All right, next, beyond new hire orientation, One Olmsted information is shared with new supervisors throughout their first year.
Good.
Okay, in twenty twenty-two, Olmsted County launched, launched a code of conduct policy to ensure all employees are operating together in an atmosphere of cooperation and respect. The code of conduct aligns with our organizational mission, vision, and values, as well as our One Olmsted DEI initiative. Um, this one also came heavily from, uh, Human Resources.
That's fine.
Okay. Twenty twenty-two plans for One Olmsted. Olmsted County strongly feels that in order to serve community equitably, we need to educate about the inequities in our systems and the way in which our community is impacted. In twenty twenty-two, we plan to begin publicly sharing details about One Olmsted with Olmsted County residents. We will be creating a One Olmsted presence on our county website and using our other external communication channels to share messages with the community.
Shouldn't there be a, uh, the first line between serve a community, should, shouldn't it be our or the?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, good catch.
Okay, eh, I, I just have to think about this one just a little bit more. We need to educate about the inequities. Who are we educating?
The community.
We need to inform the committee, educate the committee, or we need to... I don't know, okay. I just have to think about it. I, I just have to think about that, educate, you know?
Maybe inform would be a better word.
I'm, I'm sure, um, we need to, we need to inform them about the equities that we are aware of, that we have found in our gaps.
Maybe it's we need to understand.
Well, we need to understand, yeah, maybe that's something we need to, and we need to continue to look for inequities.
Yes.
So that we can, um, resolve them. Um, I don't know, something there, I'm sorry, I...
No, that's, that's a good point.
Think about that.
That's good. Okay, let's see, we will continue to take part in community events to educate about One Olmsted and to strip, just to demonstrate our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion in our county.
Yeah, you got the word educate in there again, but, um, and, and as for the community?
Yes.
Yeah, so we really are informing the community. Now, we're having conversation. It sounds kind of, uh, um...
Condescending?
Yeah, we're gonna educate you.
Right.
Because maybe we need to be educated.
Right.
You know, I mean, that works both ways, so.
Yeah, so maybe if we're using language that's a little bit more about partnership, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And, and ongoing conversation.
Superiority stuff.
Yeah. That is a very good point. Okay, we will continue developing community engagement opportunities that encourage diverse groups of residents to share their lived experience as they relate to local government. We will also participate once again in Welcoming Week events in September, a week dedicated to bringing together people of all backgrounds to build strong connections and affirm the significance of inclusive spaces to our collective prosperity. That's a lot.
Okay.
Okay, the One Olmsted team will be offering coming-to-the-table circles for healing and education in partnership with the City of Rochester and the Rochester Public Library. These will be brave spaces for community to come together to understand our history, recognize continued impacts, and move toward healing.
Is, is that a library fa- pre- phrase, brave spaces?
No, I think it's just more and more what we're hearing. There's been a, a move or shift away from safe space and more about brave space. Like, are you willing to be there and to, you know, be vulnerable and speak up?
Hmm, I, I think you can say the same thing without the word brave, but...
Noted. Okay, I haven't noted it, but Travis has, thank you. Okay. Um, let's see, various DEI-focused teams are in existence within Olmsted County Government that meet to discuss equity within their respective groups. Olmsted County has plans to develop diversity, equity, and inclusion teams of champions countywide to find out how these teams can be supportive of One Olmsted work, better, better identify where their team is at in their journey, and start reviewing their work, systems, and services provided for inequities. The goal is to work towards solutions. That one seems clunky. Any suggestions on that one?
Yeah, just, give me just a second here. You can just say various DEI-focused teams yeah, meet to discuss equity within their respective groups. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that, that sentence, Olmsted County plans to do this countywide. Well, that means the same thing, Olmsted County will do that, so.
Yeah, that first, first sentence, though, you gotta get rid of a lot of words.
Yeah. Less is more on this one. I think the intention here was to try to capture that we have some teams, but we'll make it kind of a, a point to make sure we have these teams countywide, but I think there's a lot of...
Yeah, throughout the county, throughout the county, we'll develop teams throughout the county. And every nook and cranny, you know? I know what you're talking about. No department shall be left behind.
There it is.
We will bring every crook and nanny to the table. Exactly, you know? Including the reluctant ones. And it'll, by shortening it up, you're gonna get it down to three pages instead of four.
I'm hoping even two.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a lot of talking points and you'll definitely want to...
Take out fifteen words to get it down to three, come on.
So, we'll, we'll bring the, the next version back to you so you can take a look at it. We'll probably email that out to you.
Okay.
But thank you, this has been helpful. Appreciate the feedback.
Anything more?
That's it?
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved to adjourn. Second.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Half our break.
So, Clara, do I need to meet, was it with you about the NACO conference, or?
Do you have time?
Yes.
I have time now, if you do. Yeah. I understand you're going, I already put my stuff in. My registration, my registration's in, yeah. Good for you. Did you do it through the office? Amanda, well, one of the administrative secretaries, Amanda actually did it for me, but, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna go by train. You can fly if you want, or draw, I don't care, but I, I may.
I got really excited. What's happening? That's kind of exciting.
No, the whole time, but, I don't know if you're on the corrections, I know. If you're on the corrections task force, that's all there is tomorrow, that you might be over. You're not in the library board, and that is gonna be on teams. The, no, the corrections task force, I haven't been going, but apparently I am. You have any thoughts? So, I have to turn forty-five to one fifteen.
Okay. Okay.
Which ones are you?
Come on, is that a busy baby, huh?
Yeah.
Maybe that's why I, I don't like, I think we got a little bit confused, that's what I did. Yeah, but it's on a Wednesday night, can you come? I'm glad to hear that. Reportedly.
Reportedly, yeah.
Supposedly.
It's in front row.
What have you got to lose? This will be our interview, Chris. Oh, I miss him, Ken, where's he?
He's here.
Who's here? Ken's here.
No.
Boy, he thought he'd kiss it was.
Florida.
Boy, he's in Florida.
Florida.
We're in charge, that's our own. Okay, we're at full strength. All right, well, so we, we will start with a public comment period. Is there anybody out there or online who would like to give a public comment to the board? Okay, nothing online, right? Okay, all right, we'll move on to the volunteer interview. Carter Evans, Carter, you're here to talk about, uh, applying for the Human Rights Commission? Can you hear us?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, great. All right, Carter, so it's pretty formal, if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and then, uh, we'll discuss the application later and vote on it at the end of the meeting.
Okay, cool. Uh, hi, I'm Carter Evans, uh, twenty-seven. I've pretty much lived here in Rochester, Olmsted County, my entire life. Um, I've always been interested in government. Uh, I've already had, like, a, uh, like, just a keynote awareness for politics just in general. Um, kind of ever since, I would say, middle school, kind of around, um, of Obama's election, so... Ever since then, I've kind of just, like, paid attention and, uh, tried to keep up with things for the most part. Um, I've gotten more active about it and participated within the last, let's say, couple of years. Um, considering I've gone to, um, become like delegates, uh, in caucusing just for the, just the Democratic Party in general, but, um, just going out and trying to, uh, have more representation. Um, so I'm just kind of finding different ways, different avenues to kind of, uh, facilitate that, but also participate in just local government, 'cause, um, it's more the people here that matter. Um, so trying to just, you know, better and make a positive, more impactful impact on, um, things here, so...
Okay, great. Any questions for Carter?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Carter, I'm just curious, Sheila Kiskaden speaking, I'm wondering, um, why you, you know, you, we have a variety of advisory boards and commissions, and I'm wondering, you chose the Human Rights Commission to apply for, and do you want to tell us why that, that's one of the most appealing to you?
Um, I personally consider it has the most impact. Uh, the Human Rights Board, you're gonna be probably dealing with, just my assumption, is you're gonna be dealing with people and, you know, some of their day-to-day issues. So helping to address those, uh, alleviate those a little bit, uh, I think it creates a nice benefit for the whole entire county itself. You can always just make people's lives just a little bit better, a little bit easier in some way or shape or form. So I think that's a, a good route to, uh, help out with that.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I just want you to understand that our Human Rights Commission really provides advice to the county board, and you don't deal directly with individuals that are around their needs, but we provide a conduit for those who might have a concern about, um, having experienced some violation of their rights to have it mediated or, um, referred to the, the State Department of Human Rights. So sometimes people who volunteer for the Human Rights Commission think they're going to be dealing directly with people, and you're really much more an education focus to the broader community and, and some ways to the county board. I just wanted to make sure you knew that as you're, as you're looking to, uh, serve on that board, on that commission.
Oh, cool, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Carter, we'll, uh, get back to you, appreciate your application. Okay, we will, uh, call the meeting order, we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, well, we're gonna start out with, uh, two public hearings. The, uh, first one being the Parks Rules, Regulations and Revisions to Code Ordin- Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-nine hundred. Can I get a motion to open a public hearing?
So much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Carolyn.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Tyne, commissioners, um, I am Carolyn Ziegler, the Olmsted County Parks Director. Um, so we're here before you today changing some of our rules and regulations, um, largely based on the fact that you, as a commission, uh, decided to, um, stop the entrance fees to Chester Woods. That was a big component of it, and then while we were at it, we took a good close look, and we have some enforcement opportunities within parks every once in a while, um, and find that there are some clarifications that we can make in various, in various areas. So we did some, um, changes to picnic shelter rules and regulations, a little bit in the campground areas, some horseback riding areas, more on just clarifying some of our rules and regulations. Um, so that's the big basis, nothing major, um, but just the need to tidy things up and clarify some things.
Okay. All right, so, I can't remember, do we go to the public comment first, or do we have questions for the board?
Yes, we have questions for the board.
All right, let's go with questions from the board. Okay.
Um, Mr. and Ms. Newger, um, and just curiosity, uh, how often do you have to use your enforcement act powers?
Um, it's, it's more busy in the summertime, obviously, we have more park users. Um, but I would say it's, um, easily, uh, a few times a week, if not daily, that we're doing some sort of park enforcement through the parks, so...
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, we will open this up to public comment. Does anybody from the public like to comment on this revision? Second time, anybody wanna comment on the revision, I gotta do it three times, so... Third time, anybody wanna comment on this? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to, uh, close public hearing in the parks.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, discussion.
Mark?
Yes.
We talked about this at physical development, and I brought up that time. These rules should also pertain to Grand Park. But staff recommended we get these through at the, at the country, well, the ru- rural parks first, and they would have something back to us in the next few weeks to talk about Grand Park. But basically, I agree exactly all the stuff on page three A. You know, brawling, fighting, unlawful assembly, all that stuff should also pertain to Grand Park, and I, hopefully that comes back soon, so we get ready for the summer activities there.
Sure.
On that, so...
Yeah, interesting, yeah, we should look at that. All right, any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, sort of background to that, we also acknowledge that we have a different relationship with a variety of organizations who use Grand Park, and it is, um, in, it, it is within the city limits. We have a relationship then with the City of Rochester and both, uh, both law enforcement entities. And so with, uh, physical development, I know Commissioner Beer wasn't able to be at that committee, so, uh, Commissioner Flynn and I had a very active discussion about it, as we just did at a physical development again. And, um, I, I agree that we really need to look at our rules for Grand Park, but I think that we can't just take these, this set and apply it to an urban, uh, facility that has lots of seventeen different facilities and fourteen hundred different events and event days in the last year. So it's good to know, we've got experience with enforcement in our other parks, but we need a different kind of enforcement and probably some additional rules, uh, for Grand Park, and we have to partner with, um, with our, with the people who lease space from us for their activities. So it's a little more complicated, and so I am looking forward to seeing what staff come up with.
So, I bet.
Mark, I think the sheriff was online. Sheriff, are you on?
I thought he saw.
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, Sheriff, would you agree we need some updated rules at Grand Park? Did you read what we're doing for the rural parks? A lot of that I think should be interpreted also at Grand Park, have you had time to look at that?
I have not, no.
Sheriff, we're having trouble hearing you, your microphone is up.
Oh, sorry about that, yes, I turned it up. Sorry about that. I, no, I have not had a chance to look at it, I didn't know it was gonna be part of the conversation, so... Um, I can look at it, I would expect that if there is some need to update some things, it would be helpful. Um, however, um, being it's in the City of Rochester, um, if we did have any situations that develop, whether it's the city or the, or our office that responds, we would probably write, it was disorderly, brawling, or whatever, I heard a little bit of that, if, if that was anything that came forward, uh, we'd probably write them under the state statutes and not county ordinance, um, rather than, you know, do it that way, so... Um, but I'd have to look at them, we'd have to talk about them, and I think maybe the county attorney's office would have, uh, probably some, uh, support on which one, which ordinances or statutes they would rather, um, defend if it came to a court hearing.
Well, would you please look at these, what we did for the county parks, then get with staff when this comes back to us? Give us your expertise on it.
Yeah, I certainly can. As, as to, uh, Brent there, have, has your office looked through what's been put forward, I would assume they have.
I think so, uh, Tom, you were part of review of the...
Yeah, yes, we have, we have reviewed it.
Mr. Conan, Mr. Conan was, uh, serves the Physical Development Committee, was aware of that and aware of our discussion and agreed we need to take a deeper look, so he'd probably be the one for you to go to.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, any more discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I, I haven't been part of this, uh, discussion, but reading the packet and listening to the discussion here, it occurs to me that people, you know, the public, uh, could be a little bit ticked off about this. And the reason being, 'cause I, I'm gonna put on my public hat now, is how much time have we spent on a problem that we didn't even know we had? That we're trying to enforce rules at, you know, Chester Woods and Oxwell Park, which is good, we probably have some problems there. But for the past year, all we heard about was problems at the fairgrounds, which is a county park. And we can't call it fairgrounds, we gotta call it a county park. So if we're gonna concentrate our efforts, you know, with our legal staff and everybody else, why don't we go where we got the damn problem, instead of where we've never heard that we've had a problem before? So that's why I'm just on my soapbox, and people, you know, people look at us and go, what the hell are you doing? You should be concentrating on where you had the problem, and you had all these punks running around at the fairgrounds during the fair. And nobody, I haven't seen an article in the paper or anyplace where we have an issue out at Oxwell or Chester Woods or anything else. This is why people think government is dumb. That's my soapbox, I'm sorry if I offended anybody's sensibilities, but that's the way I feel.
Okay, Stephanie, you have anything to add?
Well, I think, um, what Carla did was, was clear up some language, but mostly the change was to, um, codify, is that what we wanna say? The, the lack of, the not, not needing to pay an entry fee, that was the big difference.
Well, it's a lot more than that, Stephanie, we got pages, a red line and everything else.
It's just, the red stuff looks like it's just cleaning up some language and making it a little bit clearer, um...
Well, I think the public would like it a lot clearer if we stopped the damn fights at the fair. Forget about it, whatever.
You have anything to offer?
Well, no, I, I, I appreciate the park board, um, going through the rules because there was some clarification that was necessary. And the clarification is really important because it stops arguments, um, within the park, which we really don't want. And really, the rules are there to assure civility in the park.
Again, see my comment, Greg?
Uh, just a second, just a second, thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, but I would agree that another look at Grand Park is necessary, and I think that that's in order. So that will be coming, and, and Grand Park is a little bit more complicated, as Commissioner Kiskaden points out, because it's in the city, it probably will involve RPD, it probably will involve the sheriff, and as the sheriff points out, could involve the state statute. So a little bit more complicated, but I'm sure Commissioner Beer, they're gonna come back with a very good plan.
Oh, I'm sure we will, we'll have a...
Thank you very much.
Number one plan.
Take to, um, move approval of the, uh, park board rules as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, carries, five-one. All right, next up, we're gonna, uh, treat these as one public hearing, I believe, for Olmsted County Land Use Plan Amendment zero, oh-two, zero-two-two-zero-zero-one LUPA by EK, EK Bolter Trust, and then Olmsted County General Development Plan, oh-two, zero-two-two-zero-zero-one GDP by EK Bolter Trust. All right, I think I need a motion to open a public hearing.
Move to open the public here, or both of those as listed.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hello, I'm Christy Gross, I'm a senior planner and floodplain administrator with the Planning Department, and we are here to talk about a land use plan amendment and a general development plan for the Bolter Trust. Um, the app, the owner is EK Bolter Trust, the applicant is Tom Bolter. It's located in section thirty-four of Orinoco Township. It's about a half a mile north of Highway sixty-three, and the access, um, and the primary access will come off of Eighteenth Avenue. Um, they are proposing a through road, so they will have a secondary access on Eleventh Avenue, which is a township road. The current zoning is A-three, which is an agricultural district. They're proposing to go to an R-one, that zone change would happen at the town, um, at the township for Orinoco. Um, so right now, we're just talking about the land use plan, and the land use designation currently is resource protection, um, and resource protection, uh, potential suburban, and they're requesting it to go from to, uh, suburban development. As you can see, um, there is urban service area to the west, there is suburban... There is suburban development to the north and south of this property. Um, this designation was created in twenty-eleven when the land use plan was amended at that time. So, um, a natural progression from, um, potential suburban is suburban development. For the environmental review for the property, um, the property contains some primary soils, which is, um, the soils on this map that you see are in green. The yellow, the orange and the reds are non-primary egg soils. And so they might have some drainage issues. They're just not real good for crop production. It is in the Shakopee Formation for bedrock and it's zero to twenty-five feet to that first layer of bedrock. What that means is it's a highly sensitive area for groundwater pollution. And you wanna be extra careful that you're, um, doing pollution control measures, that you're, um, properly maintaining your septic systems. You're not dumping pollutants onto the ground. Um, they are proposing to change about seventy-nine acres, um, from potential suburban to suburban development. And their general development plan shows, um, how many lots? Um, shows a three-phase development. Each phase is about twelve lots. And so it would move from Eighteenth Avenue to Eleventh Avenue. Um, at the planning commission, there was a lot of talk about the safety of that intersection of Eighteenth Avenue and Seventy-Fifth Street. And that has been an intersection of concern of the townships for a number of years. Um, we have found out that there is a roundabout planned for that intersection and it has been geared for twenty-twenty-six. And so, um, that, that's new information that we, that came out of this application. Um, and we did not get any comments from MinDOT regarding this request. There is a little bit of floodplain soils on the property that is due to a drainage area. It's not connected to a public waterway. So the applicant will just have to, um, they may have to do a conditional use permit before running any driveways through that area based on what our ordinance currently says. Again, uh, talking about that traffic, there was a, um, our plant, our traffic planners did submit some information on the safety of Eighteenth Avenue and Seventy-Fifth Street. And it is an area of concern, um, that is validated. But again, there's that roundabout that's planned that should alleviate those safety issues. Um, historically, there, um, we provided the history of land use plans that have been amended since twenty-eleven when our land use plan was adopted. And to date, there's been over four hundred acres that went from resource protection, potential suburban to suburban development. Um, of those, um, of those subdivisions, the lots per acre average was three point four nine. Um, and the Bolter Trust, um, lots per acre average is two point six four. So it's within, um, it's within the realm of the low-density residential, um, designation that they're requesting. Uh, location criteria that we look at for land use plan amendments is the proximity and access, site attractiveness, unsuitability for resource uses, development lim- limitations, whether or not it's orderly development, the environmental sensitivity, the land use capability, non-farm developments within the area and the proximity to airports. And this, um, property met all those lo- location criteria. There are six findings, uh, that support the land use plan amendment. And, um, there's nine findings that support the general development plan. Um, this is the, the first and second, um, stage in their application process. From here, they'll have to go to Orinoco Township to get a general development plan approved, a zoning district approved, a preliminary and final plat. And then after all of that is done, you'll see the final plats again. Uh, we did receive a number of public comments at the planning commission, but we also received a couple of written comments prior to this meeting. And I believe one was included in your packet and one was emailed to you ahead of time. Uh, the planning commission did recommend approval for both of these applications. Um, we do request that you act on them separately and that you act on the land use plan amendment first. And with that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Um, the feedback from the residents is concerned about that, uh, that traffic area and with the plans to put in the traffic circle. Um, but that's not till twenty-twenty-six. And so you mentioned in your presentation that the development will be phased in three different phases. Is it clear what the phasing of that will be so there'd be a little bit of ability to, they're not gonna have the full impact immediately. So what's the phasing of that?
Yeah, um, there was a, I thought I could go back. Um, but in their general development plan, there was, um, three phases highlighted. Each phase had about twelve lots in, in each one. So, um, the full impact would be a number of years out.
Yes, I get that.
But a- as of what the timing is.
Yes.
Those are, um.
Maybe Mr. Twinton or someone who's been working with it can give us some sense of what the phasing will be. And, okay. So is, would you, would you say that your conclusion is that the concerns are not about the development? The concerns are about the traffic and the development provide an opportunity for the residents to raise that, the broader traffic concerns?
I believe so. Yep.
Thank you.
Um, the, the proposed development is consistent with our land use plan. That area was designated as potential suburban in twenty-eleven. So it's surrounded by suburban development. So it makes sense for a- as far as the plan goes for development.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I have a question. And maybe this is for our county engineer. My understanding is, is that the grant for the roundabout is coming in, um, but the money can be spent earlier in twenty-twenty-five rather than twenty-twenty-six? Am I, what am I confused on about that?
Commissioners Ben Johnson, uh, Public Works Director, uh, that's, that is true. It's, it's H SIP funds, uh, through the state. MinDOT applied for them. And, um, I believe that can be spent in twenty-twenty-five, so they have to do the project development yet and then get it ready for construction. But yes, I believe it could be constructed in twenty-twenty-five if that were all happen.
Okay.
Ahead of time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any more questions for Christy? All right, does the applicant or? I have just a couple of slides to show you today. Um, but I thought before, uh, well, first of all, I'm Bill Twinton with WSE Consultants, uh, representing the Bolter Trust, family trust, that, uh, Bolters have been here for seventy years in this neighborhood. They've watched development approach into their land forever. And since twenty-eleven, eleven years ago, they've been in a potential suburban subdivision area. So I'm, I'm gonna deviate just a little bit. Um, we got approval of the Orinoco Town Board for the land use, approval unanimously, and also unanimous approval from the County Planning Board. Um, so we have both the GDP and the land use recommendation to the board for approval. So what I mentioned at the planning commission for the county, in terms of the timing, it has taken us eleven months, or sorry, thirteen months to get here today. That's how far ago we started this process. Before we're done with all the things you have to do, the zone change at the township, the GDP at the township again, a preliminary plat, the final plat, and a most important ingredient, if we're dealing with limitations on how many lots we can develop before the roundabout is in, is a development agreement with the township. And a township has indicated to me that's where they would like to see some limitation on, on the development process so that we don't get too many units. So our first phase was proposed as eleven. It elevates the traffic, uh, on a total base count on Eighteenth Avenue about three percent. Your normal background's about two. So we're willing to sign an agreement that says, well, we'll adhere to what the co- uh, the town board says we need to with phasing this project in. Um, it's gonna take.
Mr. Twinton, I, I apologize. I have a hearing loss. I'm having trouble hearing you. Would you move the microphone closer to you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's my problem, but thank you.
Oh, um, is that better?
That's better, thank you.
Um, so from today, I think one of the things to take away is that it's gonna take me, if the trust just automatically decided to go tomorrow, I'm gonna a year and a half to two years before we're gonna be able to even dig the road in on this site, which would put us at about the middle of twenty-twenty-four, maybe even late twenty-four. And we'll have lots for sale late twenty-four, early twenty-five. We figured an absorption factor of about five lots per year. So you get two years out of the first phase. And that should help them get some money and get moving along. Um, see if I can get this to work, Christy. I'm not sure. So again, this is, um, I wanted to emphasize that you can see all of the surrounding areas that are, uh, in a suburban subdivision right now. And this is an example of density. Chippewa Ridge to the south is one lot to two point one acres. We're proposing one to two point six four. All that River Ridge stuff I did years ago is about a one to two point five average in there. So we fit right into the character of the neighborhood in terms of the lot density. Uh, the general development plan, oops, sorry, I could. That's the zoning, but anyway, you can, it zooms out far enough that you can see the rest of the subdivision out there. And there's the site, um. So I'm missing one slide. I'm sorry about that. But on the general development plan, there are three phases again. The total, uh, number of lots that we've planned for that site are twenty-nine. So it'll be three phases in there. Um, as Christy pointed out when she started, I'm gonna talk about the land use real quick, jump to GDP and I'm done. The supporting factors for land use change is really all about the clues model. How did this score? Scored well in twenty-eleven for this site to be suburban. Then you have the locational criteria she went through with you, proximity to other suburban subdivisions, good access, unsuitable for other resource uses, and fits the early development process. And the last thing, of course, is staff findings. And you'll see in your, your, your packet, the findings to support the land use change. We respectfully ask you to approve land use change from potential suburban to suburban. And the GDP, uh, presented with a twenty-nine lots. All the public roads are being built, uh, at the developer's expense. Individual septic system, stormwater treatment, open space in the southeast corner. So we kind of fit all the criteria for that. There are six conditions suggested by staff and approved by the planning commission. And we, our client is in agreement with those six conditions. So we respectfully ask for your approval of, uh, two applications. Any questions? Any questions for Bill?
Yeah, just real quick. You said the six, uh, conditions in the packet, you, they're, they're fine.
Yes, they are. And, and just by the way, one of those includes, uh, the county's comment. We're gonna have to have a right turn lane and a bypass lane at Eighteenth, so we're, we're fine with that.
All right, thanks.
Good. Anything more? Uh, just if there's questions, I could come back up maybe.
Sure.
From the developer's standpoint. All right, sounds good. So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak to the board about this? Come on up, say your name and what's on your mind?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon and thank you. My name is Kyle Erie. I'm at seven eight one nine Cedar Crest Lane Northwest. I'm here, uh, today representing the Cedar Ridge Neighborhood Association. We are the neighborhood immediately south of the, of the, uh, property in question. So, um, as was mentioned by staff, we did submit written comments, which didn't make it into the packet. I do have that, a hard copy with me today.
We all, we all got it.
Got it, okay. Thank you. So, like the applicant, I'm gonna take a little detour, if you will, um, because I'm appreciating the conversation. It sounds like everybody is sort of on the same page. As a neighborhood association, uh, we have no plans with the proposed development. We agree that it fits in well, uh, the twenty-nine lots. It's very similar to all the neighborhoods around there. We also appreciate that the GDP specifically does not have a connection to our neighborhood. That would significantly change our neighborhood. We are, we have twenty-two lots with one in and out onto Eighteenth Avenue. Um, the applicant specifically mentioned at the planning commission that that, there would not be a connection there. So again, we appreciate that. So our only concern is of course the intersection, which you all are aware of and you've heard of today. Um, so like I stated, it sounds like we're a little bit on the same page there. So I don't have to reiterate much of that. Maybe just put into a little bit of context that, um, staff report, uh, for the, the public hearing in front of you today did acknowledge that current conditions put this intersection exceeding the critical crash rate and it's considered to be unsafe. The ROCOG transportation staff recommended a limitation on site development before safety improvements are put in place. And again, this is the current conditions, not factoring in the added two hundred and ninety trips per day by this full development. I understand it's phased. A little bit of context as well, if you're not super familiar with the area and drive it every day. In twenty-twelve, twenty-fourteen timeframe, Seventy-Fifth Street was converted to US Highway sixty-three. So when that was done, approximately when that was done, there was a great separated interchange added at Highway fifty-two and a roundabout at Broadway, the east and west extents of that realignment. Uh, both, both good changes for good reason. Our intersection at Eighteenth Avenue, also County Road one twelve, was not improved significantly and has not been since. And that is actually the only other four-way intersection on that stretch. If you drive that stretch, there's plenty of driveways. There's, for example, West River Road. Any of those, um, street intersections are three ways and there's a bypass lane. At our intersection at Eighteenth and Seventy-Fifth, there's no bypass lane. There's right turn only lanes, which nobody follows. If you drive that every day, you see people in a very dangerous maneuver going through that intersection at full speed, using those as bypass lanes. Another thing, just in terms of context, um, there's a lot of, uh, families around that area, obviously, as a result of these types of developments. Lots of families with kids, lots of teenage drivers. So it's a very unsafe condition. Other things that are not taken into account currently is the Rusher Public Schools redistricting, redistricting, which takes effect next fall. I don't think that is taken into account in any of the traffic studies, a new seven hundred and twenty student elementary school and a new twelve hundred student middle school, all of which will be feeding through this intersection. And a church with an intercept, uh, with a access point, actually four hundred feet north of this intersection, intersection, was approved in twenty-twenty-one and is currently under construction. I understand that there's actually conditions on that, that as their, um, capacity grows or traffic grows, they will be required to put a turn lane onto Eighteenth Avenue. That's good, but that does not address the intersection of Seventy-Fifth and Eighteenth Avenue. So again, um, I too, we, we too learned about the round, roundabout, which, uh, we all agree is, is the right thing for this intersection. A signal would only make it even more dangerous. And a great separated interchange is just not feasible. So we're very happy to hear that. Our issue is the timing. Um, the applicant did talk about, um, the process and how it takes a while. We understand that. Um, but at the same time, we understand that nothing is a sure thing until it's fully designed. Right of way is required, which will be required for this project, and it's constructed. Nothing is a done deal. So we're not, we, we're not certain it's twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six. On the other side, development pressures and limited housing supply, you're all aware of that, is driving development faster than ever. Immediately southeast of this intersection we're talking about is the Trails of Cascade. The plat was filed on that on April seventh of twenty-one. There's currently two houses already completed on the market, and I believe there's at least another three under construction. Development pressure is, is pushing this faster and faster, which I think is a great thing. Again, we're not anti-development. We have no problem with this proposed development. It's all about the timing. What we respectfully request is additional conditions to this tying to the timing. As the applicant described, it will take some time on their end, and we recognize that. If you can put a condition where no building permits will be issued until the roundabout is complete or something like that, whatever was with, within your purview, that would put, um, that would give the developer and the applicant a go-ahead at their risk. And I think that's reasonable, and that doesn't add to the, uh, significant safety issue at this intersection. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak? No?
Mr. Chair, members of the board. One, uh, one thing I forgot to mention. One thing I forgot to mention was that a land use change conveys no development rights on property. Until you get to the preliminary plat with the RONOCO Town Board and a development agreement goes with it, that's when you get conveyance of development rights. We have no development rights with the GDP and a land use amendment. So the conditioning of phasing this property development-wise would be with the RONOCO Town Board at the time the plat goes forward and the development agreement goes, development agreement goes forward. Up until then, we have no development rights.
Yeah, I think I understand.
I mean, we can't go out and get a building permit tomorrow if you approve this today and build a house. We can't do that.
Mr. Chair, am I not correct that it actually will be the RONOCO Township that gives the building permits and that's?
Well, not the building permits, but.
They'll do the GDP.
They'll do the.
General development plan.
Yeah, RONOCO Township has authority.
Yep.
For zoning and general development plans.
We get, we give the permits, but they're, they can put on the restrictions if.
I think the gentleman who justified needs to understand that it's not, what you requested isn't something the county board can do. It's the township officers.
Now, uh, this, didn't the township already say that they, they wanted to limit you already to eleven?
Well, the connotation that Paige Cullen made at the end of the, uh, commission meeting was that you better beware when you come to see us, we're gonna put limitations on it.
Okay.
So.
Okay, fair enough. Alright, thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? I'll give you one more time. Doesn't seem like it's a full room.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if technically I can address you again. Um, understood. I'm wondering if there's a condition that can be placed on it that would be related to township approval.
Not typically. I mean, when you, when we do a land use plan, I've done a lot of land use planning. We're changing the land use of the plan from A three to whatever suburban subdivision. We can't do that. I mean, it, it has no teeth. We can't, we can suggest it. It'll obviously be in the minutes, but we can't do that.
Yep. That, so those comments would be specifically to the general development plan. Yep, so if you can add a condition to that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Alright, I don't know if I gotta ask three more times now or not, but anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? I hear nothing.
Will we close the public hearing?
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Comments? Discussion?
I'll just move approval of it with the understanding that, uh, maybe in our comments section, we can ask the town board to really look at that, uh, you know, the restrictions and address them at that point, because that's their bailiwick.
Sure.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that motion? We can get a discussion after if you'd like.
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got a second. Is there any further discussion of that motion in front of us?
Are you moving approval of the land use plan amendment? I think the planning office is looking for two.
Yep. We'll do the GDP next. No further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Um, any opposed? Okay, next up, Olmsted County GDP. I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve the general development plan.
Second, second.
We have a motion, a second there. Any discussion? Here it is done. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Alright, opposed? Carries. Alright, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Now we are onto the consent agenda. Approve the, uh, March first, twenty twenty-two county board minutes. Approve the sale of six tax-forfeited parcels to Olmsted County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Approve final payment of the twenty twenty-one by two minutes pavement preservation project. Approve resolutions authorizing county administrators to appoint temporary substitute county administrators and temporary substitute deputy clerks in their absence.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. Alright. Next up, our discussion items. First up, accept a thirty thousand dollar donation for Oxmo Park and Zoman Zoo. Who is gonna speak about this? Surprise.
I suppose you get me again. Welcome again. I'm Carolyn Ziegler, Olmsted County Parks Director. Um, back with more exciting news this time. Um, this is the fun stuff. This is, this is what we, um, look forward to, um, and what we appreciate, um, from our, our citizens that we have, um, lots of wonderful, wonderful supporters. Um, so I just wanna give that real quick overview of, of, just a reminder of what we're looking at. Um, and to remind you all, Oxmo Park is now part of the Minnesota Bison Conservation Program, along with some, um, DNR parks, the Minnesota Zoo. Um, we are a new member of that organization, and so there are some developments that we need, um, to do along with, um, updating our pens. Okay, um, so on this map, you can see where the locations are of the Minnesota Bison Conservation Herd. And there is a new, um, site developing in, in Dakota County as well. Um, so it's all about improving the genetics and the diversity of the herds. Um, and if you recall, Oxmo Park has some very rare genetic species, um, or genes that we want to help spread throughout the state. So, um, we became a very important part of their conservation herd, which we are excited about. Um, so in order to correctly or, or more easily transport the animals in and out, um, do some of the testing that we need to do, um, this has been in a thought process for long before we were in this conservation program. Um, but to have these holding pens, um, and chutes that the bison can go through in order to get close to them safely and do some of these medical procedures and transfers that we need to do, we need, uh, a, a good sturdy chute system. This is far beyond just your cattle, cattle guards and gates. Um, as you can see here, this is the, the chute system that they have, um, at Blue Mound State Park. Um, this system won't be quite this extensive, but it does give you a, a little look at the, um, beefed up version of what you might see for cattle and what we need for the bison.
Beefed up?
Beefed up, yes. Well, I don't wanna say bisoned up, because that's kinda weird, so. Uh, but we also are, um, doing a lot of education and, um, pieces of this inside our new nature center, educating people about prairies and the bison's importance to prairies and the bison conservation program itself. Um, so we will have a component of that in the nature center as well. Um, so today we are here to thank, um, the Warners, Dr. Mark and Dr. Mary Ellen, um, for donating thirty thousand dollars once again to our bison program. Um, and that is going to go to both the bison, um, chute system and some of the nature center components for the bison conservation. Um, we, um, fully appreciate their love and compassion and passion for bison and that species and the survival of that species. Um, so it is citizens like this that really, um, boost up and make our parks better, um, and help us along the way to promote these, um, important educational aspects that we have. So, uh, we want to thank them very, very much for their donation. Um, they have been strong supporters, and we wanna just make sure that you guys are aware of their donation, um, and help extend our appreciation.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair, do they happen to be in the audience? Are they here?
Yes, yes, we do.
They wouldn't mind standing up so that we can recognize them and thank them. Mr. Chair, we could invite them to speak if they choose to.
To speak?
Thank you very much for, yeah, we, we're usually, I'm gonna meet him. We don't need to be recognized. We just thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure. I, I.
Happy you're here, and we're very grateful for your donation, and we, of course, hope you'll be out there to see the bison quite often. So, thank you very much.
I have a letter from the county board. It, it reads, uh, "On behalf of Olmsted County, Oxmo Park and Zoman Zoo, we thank you for your generous donation to the Nature Center construction project. Your generosity will help enrich the park's educational programs and assist with animal care. The Olmsted County Board and our community thank you." So, Carolyn, if you have anything.
Mark, thanks, you're merry. Last time I saw you, Mark, was down at the Y. That was several years ago.
Thanks, thanks again.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Lovely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. And, uh, I, I'm sure that you have a relationship with the people out at Oxmo Park, and they're also, oh, yes. He's very appreciative. He's, uh, one of the, one of the stars out there, uh, that has really been very helpful. So we appreciate the work that the manager has done as well. But I just wanted to say that, you know, most of us grew up watching TV and preserving animals on the African continent. And we talked about preserving the elephants who are, uh, diminishing and, as well as many of the other wildlife. But very, not so often in our own country do we hear about preserving the North American bison, which, of course, is our unique animal in our continent, and they truly are a majestic animal. Uh, and, uh, to think that at one time, you know, there were hundreds of thousands of them that went all the way from, uh, Canada all the way to Texas and huge herds that took days for them to pass. So I think it's really, really appreciative and very important that we are working, and you have done such a, um, great donation to help preserve the North American bison. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks again. Okay, that was nice.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you need a, there's a resolution for you to accept the gift.
I'll move the, uh, resolution along.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favors? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Apples? Passes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Ready Economic Development in Olmsted County update. Are you done?
Yeah. Yeah, follow that.
Yeah, I never follow the kids choir and never follow that.
Ready's gonna contribute, uh, a hundred thousand dollars.
Probably check the thirty thousand, too.
Nobody asked.
Ask it now.
We'll get back to you about that, uh.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
It's in the mail, right? Thank you.
No, that's, it's, that's wonderful, and Dr. Warner's great. Um, I do wanna say thank you very much for the, uh, support of Olmsted County, uh, for the work that Ready does. I, I say this behind their backs, and I say it in front of them. You have a remarkable staff, uh, that is, uh, truly wonderful to work with. Uh, we'll talk about generally the work that, uh, we're involved in at Ready, but also, uh, as it relates to the Seneca site, we can, uh, do that specifically. Um, Kirk Boostrom is that guy over there, and I've heard his name before, and I'm working closely with the county. He's one, one of the reasons why was the arrangement with the county that he was actually hired here. And, uh, we believe that's been a great addition to our staff as well. I also wanna make a special mention of thanks, um, to Commissioner Wright, uh, Cascaden, yourself, the chair, Jim Beer, and Ken Brown, who intersect in Ready in a number of different ways. And we appreciate, um, all of that time and, uh, involvement in our work. I was struck today as I was looking at this, um, the macro economy and, uh, energy, you know, the wholesale inflation rate nationally is at ten percent, up ten percent, energy up thirty-three point eight. Uh, this is Labor Department from today. Food up thirteen point seven, and it's the largest monthly gain of price of goods. Um, and that doesn't even count the energy increases since Russia invaded Ukraine. So we know that there are a number of headwinds in the overall economy, and we are not immune from that. But as we all know, that this area tends to never have, uh, go too low and often is not at the top of the economic peak as well, and we tend to benefit from that stability. Uh, however, we're also gonna see the Fed probably this month with maybe a fifty-point, uh, uh, basis increase in rates, and we will probably see a regular cadence of that. Uh, Secretary Yellen of Treasury Department has a little different take on it in the White House and says we are gonna probably be in these times well through this year and possibly into, uh, the beginning of twenty-three. So we have, uh, a lot of things that gotta, you gotta pay attention to in, in the macro sense, but I will, uh, you have all received, um, not in your packet, um, but you have received an update from Ready on our, uh, the fourth quarter, uh, quarterly economic report. I would just, um, so there's kind of the ominous news, uh, perhaps, not even to mention what's going on in China and Hong Kong related to, uh, COVID. But the, um, our quarterly economic report, that's the fourth quarter, um, most recently of the MSA, uh, there are reasons to be optimistic. As you look at our market, the total employment for the fourth quarter in twenty twenty-one, non-farm, uh, one twenty-three, four twenty-nine, that is about it, twenty eighteen. So we're seeing, uh, some of those numbers come back. Um, however, um, we have a number of challenges as you get into the subsector of the report, and you can certainly take a look at that. Our unemployment rate, the Rochester MSA, the four-county MSA unemployment rate, uh, decreased by one point six percent from a year ago, and we're about two point three. What has narrowed, frankly, is the difference between the city, which is always stronger, the state, which is a little higher, and the federal government that was quite a bit higher. They've gotten closer. We're at two point three. Minnesota's at two point seven. The United States is at, um, three point seven. The commercial and residential valuation comparison is, has made dramatic increase, uh, from twenty, uh, matter of fact, it's higher than twenty nineteen, which is really nice to see. The evaluation of our permits in twenty twenty-one was, um, five hundred and twenty-one million dollars on a total of twen- two thousand two hundred fifty-four permits compared to three hundred and thirty-six million or, um, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight permits a year ago. So there's a good cadence of building activity that, um, is, is driven by the healthcare sector here, but there are other, including the Mayo Clinic, um, Federal Credit Union, Quality Woods, uh, the St. Mary's Campus Wings Financial, and, um, Weller Brothers Landscaping, Luther Park Place, and other, uh, projects that you see around the area that are very positive signs about our, the overall, um, economic vitality. There are challenges related to the airport traffic. Uh, we're probably, I don't, you know, it's been years since we were at the level we are today, but continuing to see increases, and the airport is doing a lot of work, um, to expand, um, their services and look at other, um, I know that there's a, a current proposal, uh, that would look at additional funding to help open additional routes, which are very, uh, important to us as well, and, um, a lot of people don't know, but we have to incent a lot of that travel. So, um, we're doing that. Housing activity is also, uh, picking up. Uh, but again, it's, um, we've all seen the prices. We've seen our average price in, uh, twenty seventeen at two hundred and four thousand, today at two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. There was a report, I think mid-last month, where we had, you know, two homes under two hundred thousand in the county. Uh, so there, there's, there continues to be a tremendous amount of pressure on that. I, I will just close that, and the, and the hotel, the lodging tax is, is well below where it was in twenty sixteen. But that's at the end of twenty twenty-one, and we have pressure on our hospitality industry, which affects all of us. Uh, if we're looking at sixty, this is generally speaking, occupancy rates of sixty to seventy percent, or fifty to sixty. I was at a trustees meeting for another organization la, two weeks ago, was in Minneapolis at the Minne. I was at a trustees meeting for another organization la, two weeks ago, was in Minneapolis at the Minneapolis Hilton. That is an eight-hundred-room hotel that many of you have been in for conferences or, you know, and their occupancy rate was three percent.
What percent, they were cheap?
No, it was, it was seven, excuse me, seven percent dipped down to three one night and I, so I stopped to say, how's this going? You know how big that house is, right? I mean, activity, whenever you've been in there, the bellman, you don't have to pick on them, they're doing it really, they're working very hard. But their, their occupancy has been, you know, at the highs really around thirty percent. And if you look in downtown Minneapolis, that is a very different picture and it's, again, I know they've got a lot of struggles that they're working through. But our hospitality industry, I mean, our, you get the report from Mayo, let Mayo speak for Mayo, but their numbers are very good from a patient standpoint, which is good for certainly all of us. But, so that's very positive when you look at that, as you look at it from a revenue standpoint, not only for those enterprises to continue to invest, but also for the tax base that, that generates as well. Again, you can look at the depth of that report and I'm happy to talk more about those kind of things any time, so we will, I'll kind of wrap up with the Seneca Site because that's kind of the crescendo of, of the county relationship, but I will share with you a couple of other things. We are launching two capital funds. We had an original capital investment fund that goes into businesses primarily in this area, the vast majority frankly, that's private equity. That fund has been fulfilled, fully invested with two million dollars. We're launching a fund two, that was again for private investors, they have to be qualified investors and I can talk to you about that if you're interested in it, but they have to be qualified investors. But the second fund, which is, we formally announced the launch of it, but they're at about four million dollars today. And it is not, we still have some time to go before it's, it's formally announced, so the cadence of that activity is very good. We also have a real estate investment fund that is going to be in the ten million dollar range that we are launching. And that also will attract private investment, but we are, there's a number of components to that because we are, we are going to be investing in real estate projects primarily in Olmsted County. So we're going to work with Chatfield and Stewartville and Byron and Pine Island as well as the city of Rochester to identify projects that we can invest those real estate funds in. We're excited about that, we've never been in that business before, but it will give us an opportunity to help drive and support investment in Olmsted County and throughout the county. That's not just a Rochester thing, but for all of the communities and we're going to be reaching out to them, there, I'm sure many of them are watching this meeting, but, and they, they know about the fund certainly, but we're going to be reaching out to them to identify projects also within those communities that we can take a real close look at and ultimately invest in. We have indicated to you before that twenty percent of that fund will be directed toward affordable housing. We're not, we will look at all projects, but, but just a pure market-based project are, will remain interesting to us, but we would really like to work with, and we've talked with the county and the housing folks that, that, you know, look at how we can also support that work with investable dollars, not just the government dollars or the Rochester Foundation or others, but how we can bring the market to that table as well, so we, we're, we're pretty excited about that. The first investment, just from a timetable, will probably be made around July first. You know, there's raising, there's, there's a lot of steps that have to go into this process, but we probably would not be making an investment until that time. It's going to involve a lot of conversation obviously with a, a number of developers and as, as we move forward. We also have talked to you about the Economic Development Center, we did base that in the center of Olmsted County. We have acquired twelve thousand square feet in the Minnesota Bio Business Center on First Avenue. That's the sixth floor of that building. We are going into that space, Ready is, and that includes our investments that I've just mentioned, and the other services that we offer, we're also going to include and partner with the Small Business Development Center, which many of you may be familiar with, has been located at Heinz Center for a very long time and has enjoyed a really wonderful relationship with RCTC. RCTC is not intending to continue that relationship and we will take on the host responsibility of the SBDC and we're excited about that. They have three employees currently that we also will be bringing into our family of economic development. It's very complimentary, we're pretty excited about that, it's a much larger area than Olmsted County that that unit serves. But we think, we think to put these resources together, along with that, the Collider will also be in that space on sixth floor Bio Business and the Black Entrepreneurial Teams Network is going to be based there as well, and we're excited about that. So it's not just a particular type of economic development, you know, we've got us doing, making various investments and managing various funds, both public and private in the community and our other work related to Olmsted County frankly and others for example, but to have a unified team approach with individual teams to work with and help entrepreneurs at all levels. So if you're an established business and you might need additional funding or other sources through the SBA, for example, there, you know, there's that arm with SBDC, so we're excited about that. The Black Entrepreneurial Teams Network, we're very excited, we invited them in and so we're, so it's, to see that actually come together is, is pretty cool, and it is going to be located there, but our work, we just go wherever the opportunity is, and to that point, we are also looking at a couple of you know, it's not a development initiative thing because you don't know exactly what's all going to happen, some, we were looking at a very large proposal for downtown for a number of months and that's probably going to be smaller than we thought, and we have two others working now, one would be in east of the city potentially, and we've got another group from Europe who wants to look at a large manufacturing facility, and we will, we will look at all of our inventory, we're also going to do a better job and that's part of what Kirk is going to be doing also, is inventorying all the available space we have. And that includes land, really in the county, we're going to focus on Olmsted County and certainly within the city limits of Rochester and all of the neighborhood communities, as I like to say as well, and getting a real solid inventory so that we can help drive and, and support that development, that area collaboration is important, and finally, well, I shouldn't say nearly finally, the, we're excited about two committees that the county will also be participating in in addition to our Board of Directors where you are represented by Commissioners Brown and Beer currently, and we have a longtime service of many others here and, and much appreciated, we are forming two formal committees that will be both economic development one and finance the other. So it's important, we have a number of investors in Ready, private and public alike, who would like more engagement in our work, we would like more oversight and, and involvement and engagement in both development, economic development as well as the finance, we, we over, we have a lot of investments frankly, and to have additional work in that area, we're excited about. Olmsted County will certainly be a part of that. Finally, and I'll let other, Kirk has anything to add to this because he has, has worked very hard along with Mr. Geeson who's out and a lot of other folks, I shouldn't start naming names here, to develop that Seneca Site process. Certainly Commissioners here can talk at length about that process. We believe that it is a well-thought-out process that will allow you plenty of engagement at the time that the statement of interest is, well, published today, right, fifteenth? And we will see those proposals, we, people have indicated interest in the site and our general guidance has been, other than that very important ear of corn, we're open to a lot of ideas. And based on the size of some of those developers, you know, they're, they're serious folks, they are about looking at that ten-acre site. And we are going to work very, very, your, your staff is again outstanding to work with, we've worked very carefully to respect the guidance of the county and work together, and it really has been a really a team approach to this. We received constructive comments from Commissioner Brown, Wright, at Kiskaden, much appreciated to help make that arrangement as beneficial as possible to all and effective. We've also worked hard to, I'm, I'm optimistic that we are going to be able to bring qualified investors to you, qualified developers, it is investment, let's face it, regarding that project that you will be able to talk with later this summer as we head into, to that, that would ultimately lead to an RFP process. So we have been very careful about guidance because you all have different opinions about the site. But we, we, and we respect that, and I think that the, the, the folks that have been talking about it so far, you know, there's very serious folks that, and, and there's some from, it's not all what you might expect in the purely for-profit sector, there are other collaborations that are kind of forming on that site as well to again, bring as a proposal. I don't know if you want to add anything more to that or if you, I mean, happy to, or any insight that I might have missed or?
No, I think it was great, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we just, between John and I, we thought it was a good idea for him to once in a while come and update the board on where he's at and where the process is at and allow the board to ask any questions about are there Ready in general, their work, or the specific work that Ready is handling for the boards?
Anything that we can?
Anybody else from Ready going to speak or I can wait for my questions or I can ask a question?
Would you like to hear from somebody else, Commissioner?
Well, you know, that's really what I meant. And you're very good at picking that up. But first of all, thank you for, for the very bullish report, you know, that I do think that Olmsted County is in a good position. And this is the most I've ever heard Ready ever use the word Olmsted County, which I'm very appreciative of, and I think that that's one of the major changes that you brought to Ready to look at larger spaces. And as far as the real estate, is, the real estate development, is, is the, is, is that working possibly, possibly working with industries that want to come that need space to build, is that part of this process?
Every, all of it, that would be included in the criteria. Within the criteria, that would be a use that could be, a, a proposal could be provided to us, meaning us, meaning us, the grander us.
Yeah.
Both the, the process.
And I was specifically speaking of your initiative to look at real estate, that ten million dollars?
Sure, I apologize, and specific to that?
That's okay, and that, that could possibly be for an industry that wants to come in and need space.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because I, you know, we were around when IBM came in, there was no land for IBM and somebody put that real estate package together, and if Ready can do that for somebody, that's great.
And, and that was the role actually of Ready and its precursor organization, it really acquired land
Okay.
for development, and we, we have, pardon me?
IOI.
IOI, absolutely, and we won't get probably down that route, but, but this does give us the opportunity to invest in or support to help make development possible.
Great.
So rather than us, but it may also involve, and we can certainly acquire land.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
Would you like to hear from Mr. Boostrom, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's, that's wonderful, you know.
I just want to make sure.
Thinking very good.
Share anything else?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Wade, the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation has launched an effort to develop a comprehensive economic development strategy, a SEDS for the region. Have you been in, have they contacted you, are they working with you, have you been invited into that conversation?
I, 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 I don't recall at this moment, but we have a very good relationship with Tim and Pam Bishop, and so if they're, and I would suspect that they would reach out to us, you know, in some regard to that.
So I know, I do know that there's going to be some focus groups held to do a SWOT analysis and I just had wondered if you'd heard about it yet.
I know, but I'm sure a lot of folks from Smith watch this meeting, so maybe they'll, that would be, and we, we welcome the opportunity, and we do regularly talk with Smith, so I'd welcome the opportunity.
All right.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
And would you just remind me, because I don't remember which four counties are part of our metropolitan statistical area?
Oh yeah, Dodge, Dodge, Olmsted, Goodhue and? Fillmore?
Homshaw.
Huh?
Wabashaw.
Yeah, I apologize, Wabashaw.
But is Goodhue in ours?
No. It's not Fillmore.
So it's Dodge, Fillmore, Olmsted and Wabashaw.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, the four-county MSA, and really we use that mainly because it's defined by so many other terms, you know, that the MSA is the measurement by which so much of our data comes. However, with that said, there are occasional developments in those counties and frankly, others, that we will get involved with. There are now, there are other economic development organizations frankly, there's one in this town, you know, there's DMC that we also work with on lead generation, that if we have leads, we do get contacted for lead, for opportunities within the DMC zone, we're working with them on one of those now, that we will turf to them, they will take the lead. Because you want to, you know, I think worse than no economic development organizations, two that are on separate pages, particularly with deed and others. So we've aligned that process with DMC. Alternatively, if they get a lead outside of the DMC zone, they, then we will take the lead on that.
Okay.
So that's anywhere outside the DMC zone, and that, that we would then take the lead, they would take the second chair. Conversely, if there's something downtown, we would do it, you know, convers, but, but also inverse rather, that, you know, we work together on a number of those projects, so. Yes, thank you, good to see you. Anything else? Matt?
I'm good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next up, our COVID update.
Good afternoon, Chair, time and Commissioners, I'm Mike Meles, Associate Director with Public Health, we're here to give a COVID update, and I'll turn it over first to Megan Sheridan, she is our Manager of the Epidemiology, Surveillance and Preparedness, and also our Lead Epidemiologist.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I want to start off by saying, you said March twelfth and here we are, right? As my dad would say, you better go buy a lottery ticket. With that though, I'm, I'm doing one of a cautious optimism, I think is going to be the, our phrase moving forward. All right, so let's take a little bit of a look at the United States and Minnesota. Here you can see, just like what we're here experiencing in Olmsted County, we're starting to see that downward trend. I will say that we are monitoring this, we call it a sister variant of the Omicron, the BA two. That is starting to, we're starting to see upticks around ten percent of the current samples that are sequenced are that variant. Usually it becomes more of a concern once we start to see it in the forty to fifty percent, so we're a little far off from that. We, what we are seeing are the effects of the BA two variant in Europe, that's where if you look at the UK and a couple of other places, you're starting to see that little bit of an upswing. We were expecting that, so I think the important thing is, is to, for you all to understand and our community is, we're still here, we're still monitoring it. But we're really going to be talking about today too is how we start to move that back into more of our routine work here at Public Health. So, and again, for Minnesota too, we're starting to see some really positive trends, starting to start to look at what it looked like that wonderful summer of no COVID, you know, July twenty-twenty-one, oh, it's such a distant memory for us, isn't it? But we're getting, I hope we're getting there, so. All right, let's look at testing, so as you can see with our cases, our testing has gone down quite significantly over the last few weeks. For the first time since release of our Omicron wave, we're under ten percent. I think it's always important to note when we are looking at our testing and our case numbers, it's going to be underrepresented just because of the availability of at-home testing. Much more so too with the free test that the federal government has been pushing out and especially there was just a second round that you were able to apply for five more of those tests, I believe, just as of last week. All right, so let's look at our cases per month, I feel like this provides a nice look at, to really hit home how hard Omicron hit us. And I also reflect back to November twenty-twenty and December twenty of twenty-twenty when we thought that was a lot and what we were able to kind of sustain with, not only within our when we thought that was a lot, and what we were able to kind of sustain with, not only within our public health structure of being able to monitor and keep an active surveillance on this, but also our healthcare system, too. So just for some context, January twenty twenty two had more cases than all of January, or of all of twenty twenty. And not super far off from twenty twenty one as well. So again, as we're moving this back to routine work within public health, I think it's to say, we are starting to build these systems. We have the relationships that if we are to see an uptick in cases, I feel like we're fairly solid with what we're able to do. So let's look kind of more on a week-to-week basis, because it's always exciting when we can show a percent change that is decreasing. So the chart on the left is just kind of looking at our case numbers from a week-to-week basis. You can start to see, we are starting to see a little bit of slowdown of that decrease of only at fourteen percent. So for so far, and I would say probably for the week, this past week, we're currently at one eighty six. I would say we would, we probably should be under two hundred for that week. And so I will talk about the community levels in a little bit, too, of, we're, this is looking at cases. The community levels are looking at rates, so just wanted to make sure we point that out. The other positive trend we are seeing is hospitalization. So I believe last time I was here presenting data, we really hadn't seen that downward drop that we were hoping for, but we have started to see that, especially to, our ICUs are down to one to two people in the ICU. And we're starting to see our hospitalizations drop as well. Then I just wanted to kind of provide an update of where we are with deaths. So for Olmsted County, we have had a hundred and seventy four residents die from COVID during our, that confirmed from COVID since we, since the pandemic started. The other, to kind of hit home that what we saw with Omicron of not being as severe is with that high level of cases like we saw in January, if it was more like the Delta wave or things that we were experiencing previously, that our death count or would probably be much higher. I also think a big contributor to to this is also our vaccination rates, too, which I'll dive into in a second. So I think what we, what could have been a lot worse for our Omicron wave, we we weathered it quite well in the grand scheme of things. So let's look at some vaccine data. So MDH actually updated their vaccine dashboard, I believe, late last week. So they do look at data a couple of different ways. So they're looking at at least one dose, completed series, and up to date. So up to date means that a person has received all the vaccines they possibly could receive. So from, for the, for anyone for like five to eleven, it would be if they're up to date, if they've completed that second shot. Or if you start to look in the older groups, if they've completed their additional dose or their boosters. This data helps us look a little bit more refined of where we're at. I think it's also to point, important to point out that green bar of that up to date is looking at a population. It's not looking, so this is where it can get a little confusing when I show you the second slide of vaccines. So all of these are looking at the denominator is the population for that group, not necessarily of those who've completed the series or, so for twelve to fifteen, it's not looking at that six thousand six hundred and twenty six. It's looking at that entire population for Olmsted County that is twelve to fifteen year olds. A different way to look at our data is looking at boosters. So, but I am going to go back because I think it's important. Olmsted County, when we look at our up to date, is is the top performing county in the state of Minnesota, so.
You've been better than Cook?
We're really, I know, it's every day kind of goes back and forth, but as of today, we were. So I know we're a little competitive, so I wanted to share that information. So when we look at boosters, so this percentage is looking at of that, of the number of the completed series, that's the denominator when we're looking at boosters, so that's why the numbers are just a little off. But here in Olmsted County, we're around, oh, seventy one percent of those eligible have received an additional booster, a booster or an additional dose, which again, is extremely high. And this is also why I believe, too, when we look back around our hospitalization rate and our death rate, we fared fairly well because of how many of people in our community have had that vaccine or that extra protection with a booster. All right, so let's move on to talking about community levels. So I think it was the last Friday in February, the CDC decided, or released the, these new metrics. I think it's important to note with these metrics is it's trying to help us move to this phase of how we deal with COVID and more in prepping us for this, for an endemic look at it versus looking at case numbers, percent positivity, things like that, where we're really starting to look more into that severe illness and the hospitalizations. So how the CDC went about doing this is, there's, first of all, there's a category of your case rate. So that's looking at the number of cases divided by your population, so divided by the population of Olmsted County, times by ten, one hundred thousand. So then you can fall into the category of fewer than two hundred per one hundred, or one hundred thousand, or two hundred or more. So this past week, Olmsted County moved into that, that first bucket of that fewer than two hundred. So based on then, you have a different set of metrics when you're looking at your hospitalizations in this percent of staff and patient beds occupied. Currently, Olmsted County is in the medium category, and that is due to the number of new COVID admissions per one hundred thousand. There's some debate of what that number really should be. I will say, hopefully, in the next week or so, we will be in that low category. It's just the CDC is getting fed information differently than how we are. And so we're able to kind of predict of where we're at, but we're no, we're no, we're not using the, we don't have access to the same data set the CDC is using to calculate these. So every week, on Thursday, and now they put the caveat that it'll be updated by eight P M. They didn't tell us that last, for the last two weeks, so, you know, here and we're constantly like refreshing to see where we're at because depending on your community level is where masking is recommended or not. So this gets, these new data get updated every Thursday, and typically, it'll probably be between three thirty or five P M. Why this is important and why all of us, most of us are not wearing masks today is because if you go into the medium or the low category, masking is not, I hate saying it because it sounds weird, but masking is not recommended, versus if you're in the high category, masking is recommended. That's not to say if you're in the medium or low, you can make that personal decision based on your health history, what you feel comfortable with, if you want to continue to wear a mask. But overall, masking indoors is not part of the recommendation of of those key behaviors for COVID prevention. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mike just to talk around some of our current efforts.
Okay, Chair and Commissioners, so the first few things that I wanted to share with everyone is basically everything that Megan just shared, and the importance of continuing to have surveillance and the the ability to see cases, the impact on the health system. And so our surveillance system will be maintained, obviously. I would also like to point out that as these cases start to come down, it tends to be a view that, oh, it's definitely a relief. But when you think about having close to two hundred cases of infectious disease in our county in a week, that in pre-COVID times would create an outbreak, much like a pertussis outbreak or other situations. So we are still in a situation in our community where there's quite a bit of illness. So yes, we're coming down, there's quite a bit of immunity through recovery of illness and also vaccine, but still a lot of illness in there. And I think that we also have to be mindful and prepared for changes with COVID and be ready if we start to see cases increase. So we're going to continue that surveillance effort with our regional Epi and our healthcare partners, and and clearly Megan and Matt primarily are going to be helping with that. Scaling back our incident command structure, we have actually scaled back ninety percent of what we were at in terms of when we were fully mobilized. And we're very happy about that. We've been trying to right-size it all through the last few months. And actually, the transitioning more to routine work has been occurring, but we're starting to see that accelerate. We want to be very mindful of the fact that any changes like this, obviously, are a great stressor on staff in a variety of very unique ways. Some staff really got comfortable and skillful and built expertise around the work they were doing in response. And now they may be losing that. And so on the other hand, a lot of staff experienced significant stress and change and uncertainty. It seemed like we were updating policies and processes every week. It was quite a challenge. So we are thankfully returning back to more routine work. And I would say for this board and our department and administration, how important it is to recognize that we are behind the ball in terms of prevention. A lot of the prevention work that we would have been doing, we had to put aside, change how we did work, maybe sometimes not even do that prevention work. We were in a coop, continuity of operation where we were prioritizing our work. And for roughly two years, a lot of that prevention work was put on hold. Not always, we tried to do, and and staff would continue work where they could. I would also say that that's not just the public health department, that's probably across the HHH division. And in recognizing how important our whole division approach to this pandemic has been, and their role, for example, in essential services, so can't say enough about that. So as part of transitioning, we have more work to do now, especially in our Preparedness Unit, taking a look at everything we've learned, looking at things that we can improve and starting to write after-action reports, both internally and with our partners, both grant required and also some things that we really need to do internally so that we understand and have kind of a stake in the ground when we maybe go into another situation. And then finally, I want to share with the board around prioritizing staff well-being. And this is more about continuing the prioritization of well-being. And I'm at the committee, the Health and Human Services Committee this morning. We shared a little bit about some incredible work that a few key staff were doing in terms of resiliency to help support staff, and I think that really needs to continue so that as we transition again, staff are, have the support, the resources, the acknowledgement, and maybe the space to get back to that routine work, we'll call it. It's a lot like keeping a high-performance Formula One engine revved, redlined for two years. And we gotta find a way to get the RPMs down and maybe do some maintenance. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Maybe, well, before we see you doing this again, hopefully.
Thank you.
Yeah, Megan, thank you very much. I I know that your math ability and looking at all this epidemiology is very helpful, especially when your figures didn't match up with the CDC's figures. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, no worries, and I think the important thing was, we have such, we have built such, I'm going to toot our own horn here a little bit, we have developed such a robust surveillance system, and we have so many capabilities here, so we are able to look and show where we're seeing differences and then be able to advocate for not only ourselves, but some other counties, too, of ways to look at, ways to be looking at it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We have next Board and Committee reports, but I'm curious.
Volunteer appointment?
Yeah, we'll do that, too. Um, let's do that now.
Move the volunteer appointment.
Second.
Now, we got a motion, it's second to appoint Carter. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we do Board and Committee reports, I'm curious, do we have, do we have enough attention, enough energy left to do a real call here? Nitrate, sir, are we running out of energy? You good? You good?
I think the call will be.
I don't, I mean.
I suspect it'll be a full hour.
May, we can't.
I hear voices in here, is that, is that people?
You're hearing voices?
I'm hearing voices, good. So another one.
This is not good.
Fisher Padocca needs a break, she's hearing voices.
Do it another day. Or what, do I do it? I don't do it.
The Chair Commissioners, the staff are prepared, but if you think that it would be a better discussion on another day, certainly we would, we'd find a way.
This is always, yeah, this is always the risk when we're on an afternoon call, is that these, this committee board meeting lasted a little longer than I would have thought.
Whatever.
So I'm open to suggestions, so I got one of each.
There's no hockey game tonight, so I'm.
It's only four thirty, Mark.
I don't.
I feel like staff put a lot of effort into preparing for their energy and their attention.
That we would be short.
I think we should, I have a staff work.
All right, it sounds to me like we just, we'll have the call, we'll have the call, it sounds like.
We're gonna have a call?
After this.
All right.
Having our device.
Okay, so before we have the call, we got Board and Committee reports, let's start this.
I'll report.
So, great.
Yes, the Legislative Committee has been quite active, and with the thousands of bills that are presented, it's very difficult to sort through all of them. But we're really working hard to to focus our attention on those priorities that that the county has, while also trying to deal with issues that come up, as they come up, to determine whether we want to have some level of support or no support for those issues that are coming up. But there are just, it's, it's, it's an interesting section. It's supposed to be short, but there, with the number of bills, it's really important that we keep track of those, so. That and 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 we all have been attending meetings. MICA has their reports, and AMC has their reports, and so we're trying to keep track of all of those. Do the best we can for Olmsted County, so thank you.
Yeah, I just did sort of add, Commissioner Wright and I both attended the Association of the sort of Counties Legislative Meeting that was held just after our last board meeting. And it is, I also wanted to point out that Tim Hunter did a presentation at the AMC meeting on the crisis, how the crisis center was developed, is kind of an inspiration for other counties. And that was really kind of at the request of Senator Senjam, who wanted other counties, he's carrying a bill to create more of those crisis centers and wanted them to know about it. We did have a chance to meet with some members of our delegation while we were up there, and I was up there again this week for a different purpose. And so it is, you know, legislative intensive time, and then, but that's probably the, it's probably as much as I need to say.
Sure, okay.
Nothing.
Okay, I just have a short report on the Winnie Lake One Waterset Program is to the point where they're trying to decide what kind of entity they're being in, they're going to be to move forward with One Waterset, one plan. I'm going to advocate that we do similar to what we did in RUT and Zombre, so hopefully that goes well. And then, in honor of St. Patrick's Day, I thought I'd end today's meeting with a short Irish proverb, "A kind word never broke anyone's mouth." Yeah, most of the jury?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chair, we have a five-minute break or?
Yep, five-minute.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I believe we're going to have the call in here at the board chair's request, and so just.